All right. Good morning, everybody. I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, May 6th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Uh, present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. This is Commissioner Waymire. If you'd all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic and to the republic which stands one nation under common ground, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Today, our invocation will be led by Pastor Ken Morton of the Church of Christ at Rock Creek Road. Go ahead, Pastor.
Please pray with me. Almighty God, our Father in heaven, we come to you in prayer at this time. We just appreciate all the blessings of life you give us. Uh, it's a trying time for our county and state and nation. We pray that you bless us as we continue through this pandemic. We, we ask that you, uh, be with those who are, have been affected by it in, in, uh, health-wise, or if it's just a loss of job, or, or whatever, whatever the case may be. It's been a massive effect on our nation. We pray that you, uh, be with us, continue to bless us, and help us get through this situation, get back to a normal life, if that's your will for us, Father. We pray that you be with these commissioners today, that, uh, they can continue to conduct the business of the county and, and, uh, be effective in their leadership. We pray that the decisions that they make will be, uh, according to your will, Father, and we pray that it'll be for the benefit of all of our citizenry. We thank you for this day, for this nice, new, bright, sunshiny day that we're enjoying, and we just appreciate all the blessings of life that you give us. We ask that you guide us as we go through this life and help us to do the things that are right in your sight. We pray that our continued, uh, blessings will come and that, uh, you can, uh, seize of the various needs that we have, and we just want to thank you for all the blessings you give us, especially your son and our Savior. In his name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
All right. Thank you.
Well.
All right. We're gonna move down the list to Correspondence and Organizational Business. Uh, let's see, we have, uh, an item to consider May Community Action Month. Um, Derek, you have anything to, to say on this?
Cole, I will turn this over to Janet. My understanding is that Janet has been working with ECAN, I believe.
All right.
Chair Waymire, I spoke with Teresa Templeton, and she asked if you guys would consider this item. Uh, she said she would love to be there this, today to receive this, but, um, obviously the circumstances don't allow. Um, we also discussed how she feels like this is really important at this time when there are a lot of people who have needs, and we still have people in the community that can fill these needs, and she just felt this was, um, still really an important item to get on, on her agenda.
All right. Well, I will, uh, I guess take a minute to read it then. This will be our first proclamation of the year. And it reads, whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and whereas East Central Kansas Economic Opportunity Corporation, that's ECAN, was established in 1966, and whereas ECAN has a 50-plus-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for the limited income, and whereas ECAN has made essential contributions to individuals and families in Franklin County by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs such as community gardens, low-cost rental housing, rent subsidies via the Sex and Eight Program, weatherization services, and early childhood education, and whereas community action agencies are needed as a major participant in the reform of the welfare system as we know it, and whereas individuals and families on limited income continue to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity, and whereas the poverty rate in Franklin County is 15.8%. And whereas ECAN's community centers provide programs and services to 370 families and 1,010 individuals in its service area last reporting year. And Kansas and the entire United States must continue to wage war on poverty by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. And whereas Franklin County and ECAN have worked together to meet the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. Now therefore, the governing body of Franklin County, Kansas, has hereby proclaimed May 2020 as Community Action Month in Franklin County, Kansas, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of the Kansas Community Action Agencies, signed the 6th day of May. All right. That is the proclamation. We would need to vote on it. Uh, so we'd need a motion. Unless anybody has anything to say about it. Roy, I think you're on the ECAN board. Do you want to say anything?
Uh, yes. Uh, uh, ECAN got started way back there in the, in the 1960s, uh, through the Johnson administration on this war on poverty, and it's been a part of the community ever since. And I think, uh, the, um, service area, it has increased quite a bit, and it's helping more people. Just like I said last, uh, meeting, um, Harvesters is coming to the county, uh, two, two times a month now during this, uh, pandemic, and ECAN continues to help, um, economically challenged and housing-challenged, uh, and the very, um, uh, in the county. So I'll be glad to make a motion to approve the proclamation.
All right. Thank you, Roy. Anybody else like to speak up in second? Roy's motion.
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
All right.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Thank you. All right, Derek. Anything else you want to get in on Correspondence and Organizational Business?
No, sir.
All right. We'll catch you down at staff reports then. Uh, public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comment today?
No, we do not.
All right. Right down the list then, that'd bring us to our consent agenda, which today would be, uh, approved, considered approving minutes from our April 29th meeting and our May 1st meeting, as well as claim vouchers in the amount of $430,038.16. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
That's it, Don. I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you. Don, is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right. This is Commissioner Waymire speaking. We're moving down to our first and only item of business, which is to consider approving the proposal from High Plains Incorporated, the amount of $23,815 to rebuild the west abutment on an existing bridge on Shawnee Road, 600-foot east of Iowa Road. Um, before we, before I hand this over to David Lee, our Public Works Director, I've always, when we have items from this company, abstain from conversation and voting. Uh, done business with them in the past, and I don't know, may do it in the future, and it's just easier if I, uh, recuse myself from it. Uh, so with that, I'll hand it over to David Lee.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so last week, I believe it was, uh, last Tuesday, we were, uh, doing some just routine maintenance on that, that bridge structure there on Shawnee, um, when we, we worked on the, uh, the east side of it, got that prepped and in good shape, and we moved over to the west side, and as they were working on that, um, they discovered that, um, the, the whole west abutment of that small bridge, uh, has been washed away with the exception of, of some quite large stones that are holding the bridge in place. Uh, how the bridge didn't wash away during, uh, all of the storms last year, I, I really don't have any idea because it's not really secured to anything. Uh, so we immediately closed the road, um, and contacted High Plains. Uh, as you know, High Plains has, uh, been a great partner with us. Uh, they have repaired a number of our small bridge structures, uh, certainly during my time, but, uh, the history with them goes back, uh, many, many years. Um, and so they, they were able to come out and, and look at it the very next day, and their, um, their proposal, as you can see in your, your packet there, is to, um, rebuild the west abutment, and then also, um, um, create a concrete, um, um, bottom to that, that bridge structure so that the bridge is more secure. Um, as a part of this, Franklin County, uh, we will use our workforces to, um, um, we will remove some fences and do some grading and build some cofferdams similar to what we had to do on Idaho Road Bridge, uh, last year, and we will pump the water out from underneath the bridge where it is, uh, settling, and, uh, get down to good material, and then prepare that base for them to do their concrete work. Uh, the price for this work is $23,815, uh, was the estimate for that, and we would, uh, very much appreciate the, the board approving that so that we can move forward. And, and just so you know, uh, we've already, uh, been in contact with the adjoining landowners to get, uh, permission to work off of right of way. I spoke with one just yesterday, and I'm waiting on, uh, uh, return correspondence from the south joiner, uh, as we speak. And so we'll, we'll be making, uh, a greater effort to reach out to them if we don't hear from them in the next day or so.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Was this not discovered when we had our bridge, uh, bridge inspection second?
Yeah, this particular bridge is under 20 feet, and so, um, it does not show up on the bridge inspection list that we get, that is done, uh, by annually. Uh, so this, we have a ton of these small little structures that, um, some of them are small bridges like this. Uh, some of them are small box culverts or, uh, small wood structures. Those sorts of things do not show up, um, in our bridge inspection list because they don't qualify for, um, uh, state or federal funding.
All right. Uh, don't really get involved in the conversation, but we keep the item moving along, so, um, you have anything else, David?
The, the only thing that I would, um, um, like to discuss as a part of this, in, in this particular situation, the timing, uh, was such that we were able to bring this before you. You know, I, I can, and, and not, um, being here that long, I'm, I'm curious what, um, how we would handle a situation where, um, if we have an emergency situation that where a bridge needs to be, or, or some road condition or something like that, that, that needs to be addressed immediately, where we don't have time to wait for a, um, a commission meeting, is there a mechanism that we can move forward with these things, just in general?
This is Derek. Um, David and I had this discussion there last week, and I told him, and I asked him to have this discussion with the board because I'm not sure, uh, all five of you are aware of this because I'm thinking particularly Commissioner Dickinson, because I'm not sure it's happened since she's been a commissioner. But there is a provision in our purchasing policy that allows for exceptions in emergency situations. And in my six-ish years here, we've probably invoked that provision a handful of times. And what I told David was that if there is an emergency situation and we need to sign a contract immediately on something like this, a bridge, that to bring it to me, um, I would probably give, you know, Chair Waymire a call and just let him know, hey, we need to do this now, but it will be in front of you at the next available meeting, and we would just, again, cite that provision in our purchasing policy that allows for that in certain kinds of emergencies. If any of the commissioners, if you disagree with that, or if you have a different understanding, by all means, speak up. But I, I just thought it would be a good discussion to have this morning to make sure we're all on the same page with this. Thank you.
Uh, this is Commissioner Dunn. This, this has come up several times in my, uh, tenure on the, uh, on the board, and I think, I think, uh, 100% agree, agree with that. Uh, um, emergencies either need to get the road closed immediately and barricades put up, or get the repairs done as quickly as possible. So, I, I agree to go ahead with, uh, uh, that kind of proposal. If you need to get it done, just get it done.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre, and I agree with Mr. Dunn. That's the way it's been done in the past, and, uh, and I think, uh, we all know when it's emergency and not an emergency, and this sounds like what David's recommendation and Derek's recommendation that it is.
Uh, this is Commissioner Howard. I agree, as long as, uh, uh, David and Derek are on top of what the cost is, and the cost isn't that something outrageous, and I don't think that would be an issue, so I do agree.
And this is Commissioner Dickinson, and also I agree. Um, I, I appreciate the leadership that we have in our county, and I, uh, I, I think that they make good decisions, and in that respect, I make a motion to approve the proposal from High Plains Incorporated in the amount of $23,815 to rebuild the west abutment on an existing bridge on Shawnee Road, 600 feet east of Iowa Road.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Go ahead, Don.
Uh, Mr. Stottlemyre, I'll second that.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
I will abstain. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thanks, David. This is Commissioner Waymire speaking. That concludes our items of business. We're down to staff reports, and we'll start our staff reports with Derek.
All right. I will start with a couple of COVID updates. Um, Nick and Alan are gonna get into more detail, uh, with you on that. Um, gonna address certain questions that Casey and I are seeing over and over, certain misunderstandings. To be very clear, Franklin County does not have an order in place. The Board of County Commissioners haven't issued any restrictions. We are strictly adhering to Governor Kelly's most recent executive order, number 2029, which implements the first phase of her reopening plan. Now, we are understandably getting a lot of questions about that order, and I think that's appropriate, and, and I am happy to answer those questions. That being said, and my staff has heard this a lot, I'm not gonna give the county's blessing on certain activities. If this were a county order, if this were something that the Board of County Commissioners had implemented, then certainly, yes, I would give yeses or noes all day long. But the fact of the matter is, this is not a county order. I'm happy to give my interpretation of what it says, but I'm not going to give businesses or citizens a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think we have jurisdiction to do that. So I'm happy to, you know, again, give an interpretation based on what I think, but that is always gonna come with the caveat that this is my interpretation. I don't work for the governor's office. You need to contact them. And so I certainly want the public to understand that. Um, county offices will continue to be closed during Phase One of the governor's reopening plan. Um, the staff in the courthouse let us know yesterday that there were some people outside waiting to get in. We are still close to the public. That being said, the elected officials have done an excellent job of continuing their operations, and, and both the clerk, or all three of the clerk, the treasurer, and the register of deeds will make arrangements with you if you, for whatever reason, need to do some kind of business face-to-face. They've all indicated that they are willing to do that, but a call needs to be made and arrangements need to be made. From a staffing standpoint, uh, so previously, we, so the board, you will recall, implemented a special leave policy for COVID-19, and certain departments had personnel that used that leave. So we asked our certain departments to platoon, basically. So half of the staff would work, and half of the staff would be at home for two weeks. The purpose of that, as I've said over and over, is if one person gets diagnosed positive with COVID-19 and they come into the office, then the entire office gets quarantined, and we can no longer provide that service, or it is tremendously difficult to do that. We are still platooning, but instead of sending people home, we have split it into basically daily shifts. And again, the elected officials in the courthouse, and this is who this primarily affects, they've done a wonderful job of working that out, and so, um, they're all doing it a little bit differently, but basically, we have shifts of about 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and then 1:30-ish or so to 8:00 or 8:30. And then they're supplementing those schedules with work at home. So it seems to be working out very well. I still have a number of staff that are at home, but they are all able to work from home. So I say all of that to say that currently, all county staff are working. It looks differently for sure, but there's no one that is at home using, um, using any kind of COVID-related leave because we're able to keep them all busy. So we're pretty happy with that. As you can probably imagine, um, literally, we're sitting here meeting over the telephone. This event has put, uh, a lot of work on our IT department, and I, I wanna recognize Dustin and his staff for the job that they've done. This is, uh, it's so different for all of us, and the number of meetings that they have facilitated, uh, the amount of work they've done for the district court. So the district court administrator sent me an email yesterday, uh, praising Dustin and his staff. They are having to do a lot of virtual court hearings, and, and district court looks wildly different right now, and, and that is Dustin and his staff's responsibility, and they've, they've kept it running seamlessly, and they've done a tremendous job throughout this. So certainly appreciate that. Yesterday, um, Cole and I had back-to-back meetings with FCDC, um, and FCDC is moving along incredibly well. There's more activity than you might be apt to think, given where we're at, and Paul Bean continues to do a tremendous job. Very, very pleased with him. He, he has been so proactive on behalf of FCDC, and he's also, he's really helped the county out. Now, as soon as we issue press releases or push out information, Paul is, is there pushing it out to all of the FCDC membership as well. He's really been a great ambassador for Franklin County, and he's not even a part of this organization. So, uh, I wanna recognize him as well. And then I'll touch back on COVID briefly before I turn it over to Alan. We are doing substantially more testing now. And so, uh, the number of positives, there's a very high likelihood that that's gonna continue to go up by virtue of the number of tests that we are conducting, and so certainly want the public to be prepared to see that. And that is all that I have at this time. Thank you, Cole.
All right. Thanks, Derek. Let's move down to Communications. Our Communications Director, Casey Brady, are you there? Casey, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Uh, sure can. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so as Derek already mentioned, things have been a little bit crazy the last several days with lots of questions from the public, but mainly businesses in the county, just looking for guidance and having lots of questions and concerns, clarification on, um, what the phased approach means for them. Um, so filling a lot of emails and phone calls again. Other than that, um, I just continue with the daily updates and working with Nick's team, um, on the survey and such. I do plan, um, starting this weekend to not do the daily update every single day, um, over the weekend, just doing like a weekend recap, so I can totally disconnect on Saturdays. Um, but if, of course, if something comes up, then I'll be available on Saturdays as well. And then, um, just continuing to be on the state call every day and listen to, um, what's going on across the state or getting more information so I can relay that to our, our public. There's also a PIO call that I'm on every, or two times a week that's always got good information to help, um, PIOs. So my world's just really COVID right now. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
All right. It doesn't look like it. Thank you. Casey? Um, go on down to Alan Radcliffe, our Emergency Management Director.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, I've got, uh, just a few things on an update. Um, we have switched, uh, also, we're doing our Emergency Operations Center briefing every Monday morning, as we have been since we started in March. Uh, we, uh, in case you have noticed, we are doing, instead of daily situation updates, we've changed those to weekly updates. They'll be coming out late Friday afternoon after we've gathered all the information. Still working with all of our, uh, partners, um, capturing information and looking forward, uh, two weeks ahead on everything. Um, we did, uh, last week, deliver surgical masks to all of the cities for their employees. As you know, we received, uh, actually two donations now from American Eagle on surgical masks, and those are being pushed out to the, uh, vulnerable populations, the, uh, cities for their employees, and also to our, um, doctors and, uh, um, other specialty offices for, uh, um, patient care and for the, the employees that are there. So, um, that has occurred, and we're continuing to try to find, uh, personal protective equipment. There is still a shortage in the state. Uh, the state is still struggling to, uh, get supplies in, so, uh, that's gonna be an ongoing battle, it looks like, for us to try to find everything that we need. We're also working on, uh, with the hospital, EMS, and public health to make sure that we have a supply in surplus for personal protective equipment for our responders and healthcare workers from now through the end of the year in case we do see a surge, uh, or a spike in the positive cases, and that's needed. So we're working on that. We met with, uh, the school district superintendents, and as you know, in Phase One, graduations are saying they are closed, um, and as Derek said, Um, and as Derek said, uh, we, it's a state order and so that's what they were informed of. Now, one thing that came up yesterday is the Department of Education gave some direction to, uh, some of them saying that the county public health or public health officer, uh, could give them some guidance or direction. And, uh, we found out about that and returned that back up to the governor's office and asked them to come up with the solution for their executive order. Um, because we cannot make anything less restrictive in this order. It specifically says that. Uh, we talked with, uh, the cities, met with them last night and, uh, discussed reimbursement and becoming an applicant if they had costs for the, uh, COVID response. And, uh, that is right now is for personal protective equipment and overtime. So they're working on that and they'll let us know if they have anything on it. Uh, the one thing that, uh, is important for us is, as you know, we are running under a declare, local declaration of disaster. That is to expire next week. The, uh, governor's executive order 28 extends that local declaration for us, uh, till May 31st. So we won't have to take any action. And I would look for the governor to continue to extend that since we have over 80 counties in the state that are, uh, have declarations of disaster and positive cases. Um, I'm going to leave the, uh, public health side over to Nick other than the fact that yesterday we started supporting, uh, public health with the command trailer and they are doing, uh, drive-through testing for a lot of the cases that they are, uh, doing testing for this week. So that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Uh, this commissioner, this commissioner Dunn, a question for Alan.
Go ahead.
We had the real high winds and heavy rain Monday, uh, and hail. Uh, do you have any, uh, information about damages in the county?
Hey, Roy, I'm going to jump in there. I have asked David Lee to give that update during his staff report. That is not to say Alan can't chime in, um, but David is prepared to update the board on that.
Okay, that's fine.
So just, just real quick for, for, uh, emergency management, uh, we did have three cities plus the county, uh, area that was impacted on that. Uh, Richmond, Ottawa and Wellsville had a lot of trees down, power lines down. Uh, some places had, uh, golf ball-sized hail. And we had, I believe it was five semis that were tipped over between Ottawa and Wellsville. That was all handled by first responders and we did not have to call any assistance in from outside the county, although I believe the city of Ottawa did have electrical crews come in from outside the county.
All right. Any other questions for Alan before we move on down the list? Okay. Next up would be Nick Robbins and for the benefit of anybody listening in, he wears a lot of hats. It'd be, he's over public health right now, ambulance and our community, emergency communications department. Go ahead, Nick. You're muted, Nick. Are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Sure can. Go for it.
So I want to start out with, with thanking Alan and Tom for getting the trailer set up. We'll talk more about that, but I do want to put that thank you out there. Currently we've seen 20 cases, um, of COVID in our county. We have seven, seven positive cases right now. Uh, Casey sent out a survey to the commissioners, I believe Friday of last week. Uh, I'd like to just kind of run through that real quick to highlight a few things and I'll talk through it since we don't have it up. But what we were looking for is we sent a survey out trying to find 10% of our, our county and, and, and see how many of them felt that they may have had COVID symptoms. Uh, and, and ask questions about demographics, where they're going to travel to, um, where do they work? Um, symptoms that they felt they had, if they had symptoms. And followed it up with if we did a, were able to do a, a mass testing or a random testing, how many would be interested in that? So like I said, we got 28,000 or 2,826 responses back. From that, 274 residents believe they've had symptoms since March 1st. So 8% of the respondents thought they had experienced some sort of COVID symptoms. Out of that, 37 felt they were currently experiencing symptoms. Um, the symptoms were broad from everything that you'd expect from fever, fatigue, diarrhea, shortness of breath, and we got a whole list of them. With the response, we had 69% that were employed and 30% that were not employed. And with that, we really wanted to know how many of them were commuting outside of the community that were employed. So with that, 30% of our respondents due to other communities, Douglas County, Johnson County. Um, so those demographics were, uh, were used because when we are opening up like we did, people are going to start returning to work. They're going to start traveling back to the job when those open up with the potential of spreading that across the county lines. We did an age demographics and the majority of the people that responded were between 35 and 64. That was the majority of our respondents. Um, 34% were male, 65% were female. And what I found interesting, if, if we, the question that we did ask regarding if they'd be interested in getting tested, 52% of the respondents would be, 47 would not be. So those, uh, numbers are useful because if we do decide to, let's say, test 200 people and if you use the numbers we have, we're going to have to randomly generate 400 to maybe get the 200 we want to, uh, test. So the numbers were put to use for us to get an idea of what it would look like if we were able to do the mass testing. How many percent, how much, what is the percentage of our community that is commuting? Um, throughout the testing, we have reached out to, or are in the process of reaching out to 10 individuals that feel that they are currently, um, currently having symptoms to do a testing on those individuals. With the 37 that we did have that did report that they are having symptoms, we had a small portion that did give us a contact or contact information for them. So with that, we are in the process of reaching out to 10 to include them in our, our testing we're doing right now. With that, Casey, do you have any response on that survey or the commissioners? Do you have any question on the survey before I move on to the rest of my report?
Doesn't look like it.
All right. So what we're doing now is we do have a, a case within the county that, that has sparked some interest and we were been allowed to, by KDHE to do, um, testing on asymptomatic patients. That is, or asymptomatic, uh, individuals. That's been something that KDHE has not la, allowed, uh, they're, uh, giving us special opportunity to do that. So this week alone, we have tested 108 individuals in the last two days. The process is we're, uh, we're doing a drive-through. We've reached out, contacted, um, people that may have been around the, the cases that we're looking at to see, uh, if we do have any asymptomatic individuals that could be carrying COVID. What we have seen is an increase in testing and, and the KDHE being, uh, opening up their guidelines. We, uh, we have got one positive case because as you well know, if you go to the hospital and you're having any surgeries, they're testing you for COVID now. And one of our cases has came from, this guy is asymptomatic. Or, uh, so with that, we are in the process of, of looking at what other testings we can do. But as Derek said, we're going to find more positive cases throughout the community, throughout the state, because we are testing more. Uh, some of our positives have came from outside of county testing, not in county testing. So we, uh, are really excited to see what our results show. We're hoping that we don't find any positives and that, that's good. But there is up to a 40%, um, up to 40% of individuals could be carrying this and be asymptomatic. That's what the studies are showing at this time. So you may not have active fever, chills, any of those symptoms and still be a carrier. And that's why we're still preaching, wear the mask, make sure that you're social distancing. Restaurants need to be putting and following the, the orders of, of the governor. If they're going to open up, they need to have that six foot of space. So we, uh, we know that there are asymptomatic carriers out there. We do know that we are going to be allowed to test more. That's going to continue to, um, to ramp up, I feel, over the next few weeks. Uh, Dr. Ransom and myself have had a lot of conversations on what testing in our community would look like. We've reached out to KDHE for guidelines. Uh, we have been successful, like I said, with getting this, uh, drive-through testing going today and yesterday to see what it would look like to, to test these cases. So a lot of stuff going on. Just to give you an idea, last week we tested 48 and already this week we've done 108. So you will see those tests increase throughout the rest of this week. I, uh, I really don't have a lot more to report out unless you guys have questions.
Uh, this commissioner Dunn, uh, where's that drive-through, uh, testing, Dunn?
Uh, the drive-through testing is on the south side of, of the county annex. But I will caution, this is not a random testing. This is, oh, this is by appointment only by individuals that we have reached out to and selected from other cases within the community that, that have had contacts. So this is not a, a public drive-through testing right now. This is a scheduled testing of individuals we've reached out to.
Nick, this is Commissioner Dickinson and this is symptomatic. I think this is probably the scariest thing to me. You know, I think of teenagers hanging with their friends over the weekend, uh, feeling fine, um, going home. And mom has a bit of a cough, but she's feeling pretty good, but she worked at the nursing home. Um, you know, and she goes into work and then that's when it starts. You know, that, that, that's what's scary to me, that we could be starting things, uh, and not even know that we're the starter.
And that's exactly right. You know, that's, that's why we're seeing KDHE continue to loosen the restrictions because you look at communities around us that have done some random testing from cases that they've seen and they're seeing up to 40% of the people being asymptomatic. And that, that's why we need to continue to make sure that we are practicing social distancing because there, there's nothing worse than saying, hey, I feel great and go visit your elderly parent, grandparent, or go into one of these facilities or even sit down next to somebody for longer than 10 minutes and, and pass it on. So we, even though we're not seeing the spikes like some of the other places, we still will have carriers in this community and we need to be thinking about that.
This commissioner Talmar said, uh, what kind of percentage of response are you getting from the people you contacted about coming in?
Everybody that we have reached out to, um, have agreed to come in and be tested. So we've got a good response from the individuals that we have talked to.
That sounds good.
And, and every place that we've had to work with, I will tell you, um, the community has been very easy to work with. Derek has talked to, talked about the, the graduations. We did receive conversations, or people calling about graduations and, um, you know, Derek said our responses, we've, we're not going to go against the governor's order, so they need to follow that. But for the most part, we have seen the community being very supportive of public health and what we're doing. And we're going to continue to try to, to do the best we can to keep cases, uh, noted and, and do as much testing as we can and work with the, the, uh, businesses on what we can do to help prevent the spread of this. So that's what I got on that.
All right. Does any, any commissioners have any more questions for Nick?
Uh, this commissioner Howard, I do have one question. Um, and this isn't totally just for Nick, but, um, if, on our policy test, there is a mandatory quarantine that comes with that, correct?
Yes, there's a mandatory quarantine that comes with, if, if you're test positive, you do have a quarantine of 14 days or, and, or 72 hours post-symptoms. So there is, uh, and then guidelines just came out from KDAG on asymptomatic patients also, which if you're an asymptomatic positive, you could, you, you will be quarantined for 10 days and then any close contacts to you will, uh, be quarantined for another 14 days following that. So there could be up to a, what, 24-day quarantine on a asymptomatic carrier. And testing can be done also, confirmed that those close contacts are negative or positive. But, and, and that's something that we're able to do now that we couldn't do a few weeks ago.
And I guess my question is if we are in a position to, and if, uh, someone is found to be violating those quarantines, um, that we have a statute or whatever to enforce that if, uh, that happens?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. So if I'm a, a symptomatic and people around me, um, I, you know, they're identified, if they are tested and are negative, then they do not have to quarantine?
Depends on the processes, how long you were negative or how long you've had it, what your symptoms are and if they're experiencing symptoms or not. So there's, there's a matrix to that. It's not as easy as saying, yes, you are and no, you're not. Um, KDAG has guidelines that we have to follow to determine that.
All right. Well, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff Richards, are you on?
I am. Um, just to touch on, uh, I believe it's Commissioner Dunn's question about the people that are quarantined, um, that have the order and if they're out violating it. My office gets the, uh, those incidents and those complaints are referred to my office. And we have, uh, we're the ones that investigate that. We have investigated some, um, early on. Um, and all, all of those were determined that the people that, that were, uh, thought to be violating were actually not violating, um, any type of quarantine, um, orders at that time. So, um, but those are being investigated as they come up. Um, this week is, uh, correction, corrections week. Uh, so it's the week for us to honor our corrections officers. Corrections is a, uh, career field where, um, it's probably the most taken-for-granted aspect of law enforcement that there is. Uh, they're often overlooked and very much underappreciated by, uh, this people in general because they don't under, it's something that isn't really understood. And I just wanted to, uh, let all of you know that our staff is, uh, they work diligently. They, they do a great job in there. Uh, right now, since our inmate count is lower because of everything that's going on, um, they're still taking care of the inmates that are there, uh, still working on, um, on, um, you know, everything that we, that needs to be done. There's some projects around the, the jail that have been completed. Um, I think, uh, I, no, I'm proud of them. I think all of you would be as well if we go through and see what, what they have been able to accomplish. And, uh, like I said, this is a week to honor them, and I just wanted to make sure that, that we do, and we put that out there. Um, next week, uh, will, is Peace Officer Memorial Week, and, uh, Sheriff Waymire, I'll be working on, uh, getting a proclamation, um, to you, uh, for that because we typically do one each, each year for that as well. Um, so next week we will be, uh, honoring, uh, peace officers. And this is kind of a unique timing on this is, I'm sure you are all aware, um, Sunday evening, um, Officer Mike Knosher from the Overland Park Police Department was killed in the line of duty. Um, Mike is a friend of mine. Uh, we worked together, uh, for several years. I have a deputy that also was good friends with him and worked with him as well. And we have a CO that also worked with them. So it, that was an incident that impacted, uh, part of our office personally, but all of us, um, professionally and through the, just through the bond that we have, uh, is in the profession. So, um, I just ask that each of you, you know, kind of remember our, our, our staff and your thoughts and prayers, uh, going forward, uh, you know, in the next week or so anyway, because, uh, we got a couple people that are, that are, that it, it's hit pretty hard. And so, um, it's a stark reality that all of us have to deal with and that we accept going into the profession, but it doesn't make it hurt any less when it happens, especially if someone, uh, hits this close to home. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to pass that along to you. Um, also this, this week, and I understand David's going to be talking about it, but, um, with the storms that did roll through, we, uh, we had ex, some extra people call, come out. We called people out to go around and check on things. We contacted several residents throughout the county where, um, where there was damage at their homes, checked on them, um, just to make sure everyone was okay. And, uh, we did receive assistance from the Highway Patrol, um, with all of those semis that were blown over, um, that Alan referred to. Um, we would not have been able to get all those, to do that in a safe manner without the outside help. And we appreciate the, uh, relationship that we do have with the Highway Patrol and, and how we are, they, they are always there to assist us. So we appreciate it. Other than that, if anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to
Uh, does it appear so? Thank you, Sheriff. All right. We'll move down to Clerk Janet Paddock.
Thanks, Sheriff Waymire. So I just wanted to touch on a minute, um, what Derek said about the courthouse staff. Um, we did meet and we did work out some, some shifts to keep our employees all working in the courthouse. And some of us are, um, working a little bit from home, but mainly my staff right now, it has work that has to be done in the courthouse. We can't do any maintenance to our election lists or obviously any filings for offices that are going to be on the ballot in August and November, um, from home. So we need to be on site right now. So, um, the offices in the courthouse have also, um, extended their hours just a little bit to accommodate the, um, different work-from-home situations and stuff that everyone in our community are working with right now. So the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, and the appraiser's office, along with motor vehicle under the treasurer, um, we have all extended our phone hours till six o'clock right now. So you get an extra hour and a half to contact us, um, and discuss your business. Like Derek said, we are working out arrangements with each, um, person as needed to meet them. Uh, I met a candidate outside of the courthouse yesterday to complete his candidacy paperwork. So we are making those arrangements. I definitely can email candidate forms to people so they have them in advance and, or mail them, and they can turn those in. Um, Casey put out a reminder that the filing deadline for all of the offices that are up for election is June first at noon. And so that's on Facebook. I would just encourage anyone listening to go out to Facebook and like the Franklin County government page and, um, subscribe to updates so they see those things when they're pushed out and share those as much as possible because that's kind of how we get our message out. So, yes, June first at noon is the deadline. Um, as you know, we have two commission seats up, um, Commissioner Dunn's commission seat, Commissioner Howard's seat. Um, the clerk, treasurer, registered, sheriff, and county attorney are all going to be on the ballot this year. We also have treasurer, treasurer and trustee from every township and all the precinct committee people from both the Republican and Democratic Party. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions about, um, those offices that are beginning to be on the ballot, and so is anyone in my office. So if anyone listening has any questions about that, they feel free to call my office, and I'll be happy to discuss that with them.
All right. Thank you, Janet. Next would be David Lee, our Public Works Director.
Okay, Commissioner. So on Monday, we had, uh, as you know, uh, quite a, quite a big storm come through the county, uh, packing over seventy mile an hour winds in, in some instances, um, with, along with pea-sized to golf ball-sized hail. Uh, the areas most impacted were, uh, from Ri- Richmond to the Lane area, and then, uh, essentially the north half of the county from Appinews to Wellsville. Um, that whole area was hit pretty hard by the, by the winds. Uh, we, our crews, uh, took care of about a hundred different trees that were across our roads, plus, um, oh, just many, many locations that had limit and debris, uh, blocking the roads. And so we went out and, and, uh, got that, uh, removed from the road to allow the public to get where they needed to go. There were roughly, uh, ten miles of full maintenance roads that were closed due to down power lines and, uh, that sort of thing. So we assisted the, the power companies in barricading roads until they were able to get there and, uh, get those repaired. Uh, to my knowledge, all of those, um, all of those roads are now reopened. Uh, I'm sure that there are some minimum maintenance roads that, uh, we simply have not been able to get to yet. It's just, uh, too wet out there. Uh, we worked with the, uh, the city of Ottawa. Their salt storage building was damaged, uh, and so they are going to be storing their salt in our salt bin. Uh, we've got capacity to help them out, and so, uh, uh, they're bringing that material to us today. Um, we did check with a few of the cities, and they pretty much had things under control, which allowed us to focus on our roads. Um, and I can tell you that it was, it was quite a task. Uh, we had folks out till almost dark Monday night, um, taking care of these tree limbs and debris. And then we had a, a, a number of signs and whatnot that were blown over also. So we, uh, worked late to get those put back up. Our, uh, we did have some road damage. Uh, as you can imagine, anytime you get an inch and a half to two inches of rain and, you know, in a short period of time like that, twenty, thirty minutes, um, it's going to cause some issues. Uh, most notably, uh, if you recall last, late last year, we rebuilt Cloud Road from Eisenhower to Missouri. Um, and it, it looked great, uh, although there was not a, a blade of grass or any crops in the field. And so, uh, with this heavy rain, um, much of, of that work has, has been damaged. So we'll, um, have to be replacing some entrances and, and digging silt from the fields out of the ditches to get those to work properly. Uh, also, Allen Road between Texas and Tennessee suffered a, a similar fate. Uh, and so we'll be, we'll be working on that. Um, our crews are going to be busy for weeks to come, uh, removing the large trees and chipping up the limbs and, and whatnot left over from this storm. So we'll, uh, we will definitely be busy doing that. As far as damage goes, um, um, I was out as well. So I, I saw a number of, um, uh, houses that had a little bit of damage, not, uh, not terrible, some shingles and some, excuse me, some of those things missing. Um, up just north of the county line into Douglas County, there was a barn that, um, blew into the road up there actually. And, and, uh, I heard reports of, uh, grain bins being blown over as well. So I know that there's been some property damage, um, and, and folks, um, are dealing with down limbs and, and trees and their own property, um, uh, all over the county. So it was a significant storm, uh, for wind damage. Uh, so that's pretty much what we've been doing this week, uh, trying to clean up and deal with the, the aftermath, aftermath of the storm. Um, and just to give you an update, next week I'll be bringing the Iowa Terrace project to you, uh, for approval. Uh, we were finally able to acquire all of the easements necessary for that project, and, uh, we're hoping to be able to go to construction sometime in mid to late June. I'd be happy to answer
All right. Well, thank you, David. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right. Next would be, uh, commissioners' comments, board reports. Uh, start with, uh, Commissioner Dickinson?
The only thing I've been to, um, is the Food Council meeting we had on Monday. And again, they have more, a lot more people that are in need, uh, and still trying to go around, um, and make sure that they are COVID-friendly as far as all their, um, policies. So trying to move forward in a, in a time that is, um, definitely unusual. And then the other thing, you know, I, I listen to all these, um, reports of the departments around the county and how proud I am of all of them, that they are continuing to do their job, um, and, and the county and the roads guys out this, you know, in the last couple of days. You know, we have a great group of workers and how much I appreciate them so much. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Uh, yeah, just basically thank everybody for what they're doing. And we did get lucky. I did take a little road trip after that, just, they talking, I had some, uh, friends and relatives just south of Richmond, about one mile. We're lucky it didn't hit Richmond like it hit down there because they had some, uh, golf ball, baseball-sized hail down there that tore up some, uh, a lot of property and a lot of homes. And, uh, about made some roads unpassable down there. And I understand exactly what David's talking about. I seen it down there, really seen it down there, uh, where the fields, uh, have just been worked and nothing put back in yet, and just caused havoc like you can't believe. So I appreciate, uh, all public works just having to try to take care of, along with everything else. And, uh, and I'm glad that our staff has been keeping commissioners pretty well, I think, uh, lined out on, being we don't get to see each other face to face, but yeah, keeping us lined out pretty well on what the county's doing and how, what they're trying to do. And thanks to all of them. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, of course. Uh, the storm caused quite a bit of, of, uh, wind concerns out here north of town. Uh, uh, personally, uh, electricity was off for about, uh, seven or eight hours and electric, electrical, a couple of people were out, um, trying to get our electricity back in. And I appreciate the job that they did to get our electricity going again north of town. And also I'd, I'd just like to say thank you for our corrections officers and the job they're doing there at the jail. It's, uh, like Sheriff Richards said, that there's, there are unseen workers, but, uh, they have a very important job and, and, uh, just appreciate, uh, uh, those folks that do that. And, uh, send condolences to the sheriff and those others affected by that incident up there in this Johnson County. It was, um, you know, terrible when that, that stuff happens. I haven't been to any other, uh, meetings or anything else. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Howard?
Uh, I have not been to anything since, uh, our last meeting.
All righty. Uh, this is Commissioner Waymire speaking. Um, we, Derek and I, uh, did attend, uh, via Zoom, a couple, uh, FCDC meetings since last we met, uh, as he mentioned. And, uh, that organization's still being productive and, uh, moving forward. And, um, yeah, we're, we're really like, lucky to have, uh, the director that we have. So, uh, things are going well as far as FCDC is concerned. I'm happy to report back to, to this board. So, uh, would anybody, staff or commissioners like to say anything else before we look to adjourn this meeting? All right. And I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Dunn, a motion to adjourn?
All right. And Commissioner Stottlemyre seconded. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.